We are ready to start the public hearing for 641 Connect. My name is Brenna Angel. Nicole Childress and I are part of the communications team providing technical support for tonight's hearing. There are a few housekeeping items to take care of before we begin the presentation. First, this meeting is being recorded and will later be transcribed and posted online. Cameras and mics are only on for the presenters that you will see this evening. As an attendee of this hearing, your camera and mic are not on and will stay off during the presentation. If you have signed up in advance to make a verbal comment, or when you get to the end of the presentation, if you decide you want to make a verbal comment, we will give you the opportunity to unmute yourself once the presentation is over. If you'd like to make a comment or ask a question, you can use the question and answer function. You'll see that it's the black bar at the bottom of your screen. Whether you make a written or a verbal comment or question, all remarks will be recorded as part of the hearing record. There will be a designated comment and Q and A time following the presentation. If some questions require additional contact outside of this hearing, the project team will reach out to you this week. We want to make sure that we can give your questions the time and attention that it deserves. So with that, I will turn it over to Chris Kuntz, project manager of 641 Connect for KYTC. Chris?
Thanks Brenna. On behalf of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, I would like to welcome all of you to the public hearing for the 641 Connect project. This project is a reconstruction of the section of US 641 between Ettyville and Fredonia. My name is Chris Kuntz and I'm the KYTC project manager for this project. The purpose of our meeting tonight is to present the preferred alignment and receive comments from the public regarding this proposal. This is not the final stage of developing the project, but a necessary and important step towards completion of design. As many of you know, this project has been under development for quite some time. This section is the last leg to completing a larger corridor between Fredonia and Marion with I-69. The Transportation Cabinet is supported in development of this project by consultant firms EA Partners and American Engineers. Paul Looney with EA Partners is the consultant project manager. Mark Wartzberger from EA Partners has been the lead design engineer almost since the inception of the project. And we're also supported by American Engineers represented by Richard Tutt, the environmental coordinator for the project. Each of these gentlemen will be assisting with the presentation this evening. As an introduction for the project, we're now going to share a short video we developed to explain the US 641 Connect project and some of the activities undertaken and challenges to face during the development of the project.
We need better road access. It's hurting our businesses. We're starting to see things move away and job losses. And so that's just been part of this process over the last 15 years of trying to get this road done, is trying to get it done before there's too much negative impact to the community.
Dating back to 2003, the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet has studied ways to improve the US Highway 641 corridor in Lyon, Caldwell, and Crittenon Counties. The 641 Connect project will improve mobility, economic development, and safety in the region. Residents and business leaders have long seen the need for a wider, safer road that can be part of Kentucky's designated National Truck Network.
Lyon County and Caldwell County, their only truck network routes are I-69 and I-24. So rebuilding this road to where it's suitable for trucks will greatly help the freight linkage, truck network capacity for those communities. A business in Crittenon County recently lost a million dollar contract because of not having a route on the National Truck Network to Marion. By not having that truck access, they were not able to legally take on some of the aspects of that contract and had to turn that contract down. That's just one example of how not having a good truck route, not having a good road can severely impact the economic fortunes of a small community.
Safety is a key aspect of the project. The existing two-lane highway of 641 between Ettyville and Fredonia has a crash rate that is higher than the state average.
Being too narrow, poor vertical curves, poor horizontal curves, and rebuilding the road to make it wider with better geometry will reduce the number of accidents that we see on the route.
641 Connect addresses those deficiencies by designing the corridor as a four-lane highway with a 40-foot median. The new nine-mile section from Ettyville to Fredonia will join another section of 641 from Fredonia to Marion that was realigned in late 2018. Over the years, KYTC worked with residents and stakeholders to consider many options for a new alignment of 641 between Ettyville and Fredonia. Numerous public meetings and feedback helped determine which route would be the best option. The goals: minimize impacts to farms and businesses and maximize the use of land already owned by the state.
Getting that input from the public on the nuances of what their property is like, where they think the road could go is invaluable for us. And we try to incorporate that as much as we can into our designs. You know, not every idea is feasible, but we vet everything. And the ideas that are feasible, we try and incorporate that into what we're doing.
In 2019, KYTC unveiled a preliminary preferred alternate route for 641 Connect. It starts near US Highway 62 and the interstates in Ettyville and routes over part of the Western Kentucky Correctional Complex and the Industrial Park. The route would also better serve the Fredonia Quarry, preserving jobs and creating better access for trucks. Based on comments from the public, minor changes were made to the preferred route to avoid a utility substation and move 641 along an abandoned railroad bed. The project team has also conducted an environmental assessment that will be turned over to the Federal Highway Administration.
We know that it's a big impact. We thank you for your patience in dealing with us and dealing with this long process. We hope that we've done the best we can to incorporate all your comments into this process.
So what's next for 641 Connect? After documenting public comments about the preferred alternate route for Ettyville to Fredonia and the environmental assessment, the project team will develop a detailed final design for the route. Depending on available funding, construction could begin in 2025.
Improving the road access for freight will be a tremendous economic improvement for the area. It will keep the jobs we have and hopefully create more new, better jobs for the area. And then the safety aspect, reducing the number of accidents that lead to fatalities, serious injuries, you know, that has a real identifiable, quantifiable improvement on people's lives.
The mission of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet is to provide a safe, efficient, environmentally sound, and fiscally responsible transportation system that delivers economic opportunity and enhances the quality of life in Kentucky. These are the objectives that we try to keep in mind on every project we did. And these are the we do, and these are the project, the mission and the objectives that we kept in mind as we've been working on this project throughout the years. The project area is outlined in the video. 641 Connect will reconstruct approximately 9.2 miles of highway between Ettyville and Fredonia. In Lyon County, US 641 links travelers to US 62, which then provides connectivity to I-24 and I-69. At the northern end of 641 in Caldwell County, the project will join with the 5.5-mile highway reconstruction between Fredonia and Marion that was completed in December of 2018. For the purposes of the rest of this presentation, to make this look better on screen, we're going to rotate the view of 641 with Ettyville on the left and Fredonia on the right of your screen. So the north will be facing to the right. And now I'm going to turn this over to Paul Looney from EA Partners, our engineering consultant, to step through some of the road location issues.
Thanks Chris. With the cabinet's mission in mind and the charge from the Kentucky General Assembly throughout the highway plan in place, the cabinet determined following overriding goals for this project. First, improving safety and emergency vehicle response. Second, facilitating freight movement along the corridor. And lastly, improving access to recreational and tourist areas. With the purpose of the project in mind, we also established early on primary objectives to guide us during development of alternate routes for US 641. We recognize every project we undertake has impacts on residents and business owners. Our objective is to balance those to minimize detrimental impacts as much as possible. To do that, we established a list of priorities to follow and weighing potential impacts. First and foremost, every effort was made to avoid impacting people's homes. This isn't always possible, and there are potential home impacts on this project. Second, we maximize utilization of land already owned by the Commonwealth. As most of you are aware, the state already owns a significant amount of land for this project, particularly in Lyon County. Aside from existing roadways, the Western Kentucky Correctional Complex at the south end of the project constitutes a significant amount of land. Based on previous public comments and feedback from local officials, every effort was made to push the preferred alignment as much as possible on existing state-owned property. This is just one area where the cabinet really listened to the public and was able to make positive changes to reduce impacts. And lastly, the nature of land in this area is primarily large farms. So we tried to minimize severing farms in a way that would severely impact the ability to continue efficient farming operations. As most of you are aware, and as we discussed in the video, this project has been underway for quite some time. Transportation projects such as this with significant impacts typically take time to develop. Actually started with a planning study in 2003. That led to the legislature providing funding to start preliminary design in 2006. From the beginning, the cabinet has attempted to engage as many local stakeholders as possible. This engagement has helped us evaluate many alternative alignments over the past 15 years. KYTC has hosted three public meetings as the project progressed. We have also been performing a full range of environmental assessments for this project, including looking at wetland and stream impacts, identifying and avoiding sensitive features like cemeteries and historic properties, and doing field inventories of other natural features along the project corridor. The traffic on this segment of US 641 has remained relatively consistent over the last several years. Both the Lyon and the Caldwell County sections have between 2,500 and 3,000 vehicles per day. There is a higher truck percentage on the Lyon County segment, most likely reflective of trucks traveling to and from the Fredonia Quarry South. We also analyzed crash dead on this segment. We looked at a three-year data between October 2016 and September of 2019, indicated that there were 70 crashes on the 10-mile section of 641 between US 62 and Fredonia. That included 24 crashes that resulted in injuries to vehicle occupants. As most of you know, there was unfortunately also a fatal collision involving a semi and a garbage truck just a few weeks ago on 641 between US 62 and Highway 1943. When compared to the state average for roadways of similar type, the injury rate for both Lyon and Caldwell Counties were higher than the state average. Additionally, the overall crash rate was higher for the Caldwell County segment. We broke the crashes down by crash type, a single vehicle, rear end angle. When we did that, several things really stood out to us. The percent of crashes that were single-vehicle crashes in both Lyon and Caldwell County were higher than the state average. The percentage of crashes involving commercial trucks was also significantly higher in Lyon County than the state average. Additionally, the percentage of crashes that resulted in injuries were higher in both Lyon and Caldwell County than the state average. All of these factors really presented to us a picture of a roadway that needs to be addressed to improve safety. And I don't think that's anything we're telling you all that you don't know already. As the project progressed, we identified key areas that either needed to be avoided entirely or areas where we had to limit impacts from the project. As we mentioned, the Western Kentucky Correctional Complex on the south end of the corridor comprises a large area that houses two separate state prison facilities. While this has already stayed on land, there are limitations to where a new road can be placed in respect to the working areas of the complex. This is a real specific area that we have been able to work with the Kentucky Justice Cabinet and make some very positive changes for the project. During the environmental assessment of the project, three farms were identified as having historical significance in the area. Holt Goodman, Ricebeck Sutton Farms in Lyon County, and the Kreider Stock Farm in Caldwell County all have been deemed of historical significance in part or in total and have required us to look for feasible alternatives to avoid impacting them. Additionally, there's a large rock quarry, the Fredonia Quarry near the Lyon-Caldwell line. The quarry is a deep existing pit that is inactive and an active operation pit. This project is also the final piece to a longer corridor connecting I-69 to Marion. The section of US 641 between Fredonia and Marion was completed in 2018. That project constructed the initial two lanes of a four-lane ultimate section. In the project from Fredonia to Marion, both bridges over Livingston Creek were built and the groundwork completed for the ultimate four-lane highway. A goal for 641 Connect between Ettyville and Fredonia is to tie into the Critten County section already built as closely as possible with as little rework. This map again shows the current alignment of 641 between Ettyville and Fredonia. This photo, and as the video showed, this is a pretty typical representation of the roadway along the route. The pavement varies between 22 and 24 feet wide with 10 to 11-foot lanes and 1-foot narrow paved shoulders. The alternative analysis for this project has studied various alignments. As is pretty common, the early alternates looked to remain pretty close to the existing 641 corridor. That minimizes the lengths of tie-ins back to the existing road. These options also looked to go west of Fredonia to more easily tie into the segment already constructed between Fredonia and Marion. Public comments and stakeholder feedback on these alternates asked that we look to shift to the east, which is down on this drawing, to push onto already-owned state property near the prison. Also, both the white and pink alternates bisected the historic farms on the south and north ends of the project. In 2013, the cabinet examined an alternate that would push 641 more onto the prison and go to the east of Fredonia. As this alternate and others were studied, issues were identified, and we received additional public comment. This feedback led the cabinet to look at alternates that shifted the new alignment further to the east of the existing 641 route. In 2018 and 2019, the Transportation Cabinet began further discussions with the Justice Cabinet regarding the ability to move the roadway further onto prison property. This ultimately led to some critical concessions that allowed us to make changes that much more aligned with the input we'd received from the public and local officials. The Justice Cabinet at that time allowed that the right-of-way could encroach farther under the prison farm as long as it didn't get within 500 yards of the existing prison internal fence. There's also an identified industrial complex, a Western Penny Round Industrial Park just north of the prison complex. This was an area that early on, we were trying to avoid a severing to allow for larger development. But in further discussions with local officials, they determined that we could basically bisect and go through the middle of the industrial park. This led to the alternate alignment that was shared with the public in August of 2019, the green route here. In 2020, the Transportation Cabinet reached out to the owners of the rock quarry. They currently own the long segment of railroad tracks from the quarry headed up north towards Fredonia. The cabinet had been asked by the public and local officials to consider using some of this old roadbed for the project. And after further discussion, the cabinet learned that the quarry does not currently utilize some of the rail segment to the north. This led to the preferred alternate that the cabinet is bringing to you now this evening for consideration. The principal difference between this and the route that was shared in 2019 is the shifting of the alignment north of the rock quarry to be more centered on the rail bed. So as you can see here, the light teal line represents what's changed since the previous public meeting. We do have a more detailed exhibit with property lines on the project website. It's a large PDF that you can zoom in and out and more see better, more specific properties or where things along the route fall if you go to the project website. All the alignments and corridor impacts shown today and in previous studies have assumed a roadway similar to the ultimate section proposed north of Fredonia. That would be a four-lane depressed median section with wide paved shoulders that you're seeing on the screen. In addition to the detailed environmental studies that are performed and public involvement, projects that are federally funded such as this that reach a $50 million or greater cost require a formal value engineering study. This project meets that threshold. The value engineering study was done by an independent team the week of June 28th, just a few weeks ago. Preliminary results of that study were shared with the project team in early July. The V team took a high-level but very thorough look at ways that the overall project objectives could be met, but at a lower cost. They also looked at potential ways that adjustments to the project could be made that would improve overall performance. The results of this study are pending, but we did want to share a few of the items that were presented to the project team. As we mentioned earlier, the current traffic on this section of 641 varies between 2,500 and 3,000 vehicles per day. Current traffic projections indicate this may grow to as much as 7,000 vehicles per day in the next 25 years. This is well below the typical criteria for a four-lane roadway. However, one of the primary objectives of the project is to create a roadway that is safer and more easily traveled by commercial trucks. Also, having passing opportunities can improve safety and mobility along corridors. With those factors in mind, the value engineering team recommended that the project team consider a four-lane section with a flush median. The benefits of this section is that the entire roadway can be lowered, requiring less fill material to construct, and would still provide an increased separation of three feet over the existing two-lane roadway. The second value engineering recommendation was to consider an initial construction that included sections with passing lanes. This can be called a two-plus-one roadway. As the passing lanes typically stagger northbound and southbound, such that only three lanes exist at any one location. Again, as it is anticipated that the initial construction of this segment of US 641 might be similar to the section north of Fredonia, the two-plus-one would provide the added benefit of passing segments and wider outside paved shoulders. We present these to you tonight. They're just options that are being considered, and no final decision has been made by the cabinet. But we wanted to present these to you since we had the opportunity this evening so that you could take a look at them, review them, and then provide comment back to the cabinet. So again, let's look at the roadway options of the four lanes with the 40-foot median, a four-lane option with a flush median, and a two-plus-one option. I'm going to now pass the presentation to Richard Tutt with American Engineers. He's going to dive a little deeper on the environmental assessment process and that work that's been done to date.
Thanks Paul, appreciate that. In compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act, or what we call NEPA, KYTC conducted a range of studies to understand the potential impacts on the human and natural environment caused by the project. The study area is what we call the area of potential effect, which we call the APE or APE. The green shading represents the original study area. Existing resources within the APE initiated a new roadway alignment to the east of US 641. And the study area was later expanded to include more of the Fredonia area as indicated by the orange shading. Studies have been updated as necessary to reflect different potential roadway alignments over the years, including the routes presented in the 2019 public meeting and this evening. The blue shading represents the most recent area of potential effect. Environmental studies look at several things. First, air quality to assess if the project creates degradation of the existing air quality in the study area. For highway noise, nine noise receptors were modeled to assess if noise levels will be elevated above acceptable levels for the study area and if abatement measures are needed. Aquatic and terrestrial ecology, which includes wetlands, floodplains, streams, creeks, springs, groundwater, animal and plant resources are all evaluated in the project quarter to determine if the project requires mitigation due to impacts. As part of the environmental study, the project team also conducted a cultural historic assessment. 135 identified cultural resources such as homes, structures, farms, and park resources were investigated within the original and expanded Fredonia APE. Archaeology. Over 200 sites were registered in Lyon and Caldwell Counties. Five sites warranted further investigation prior to environmental final approval. For hazardous materials and underground storage tanks, three sites are designated for further investigation in the quarter based on past use and if final alignment dictate that we look further. Finally, socioeconomic factors, land use, community resources, parks, relocation, cemeteries, environmental justice, and farmland were all evaluated as indicated in the video. Several alternates were considered requiring additional study, including cultural historic studies and input from both the public and elected officials in the years between 2008 to 2019. As we covered in the overall history of the project, preliminary preferred alternate was presented in 2019 with the minor modifications now that Paul alluded to. The proposed alternate route triggered new baseline environmental reports, and these carried forward to the environmental assessment document, which was presented for review by the KYTC and the Federal Highway Administration this past spring and was recently approved by the FHWA on July 1st. The environmental assessment document is available for review on the project website, 641 Connect. The next step in the environmental assessment process is that all agency and public comments will be reviewed and summarized, and those comments will be presented to the Federal Highway Administration. When I go back to Chris for the final portion of the presentation.
Thanks, Richard. So what's the process moving forward? After this meeting, we'll be accepting public comments through August the 6th of 2021. Then, as Richard mentioned, we have to finalize our environmental document. We have to compile all the public comments, agency comments from this meeting, and submit that final environmental document to FHWA. After that is approved, we'll begin a final design this fall, in the fall of 2021. That would be the more detailed design that Paul and Richard both mentioned in their parts of the presentation. And then the last two things you see on here, the right-of-way acquisition of project construction. Those years are based on what's funding, when funding is currently available in the Kentucky six-year highway program. Right now, we have funds for property acquisition that are designated for 2023, and the funding for project construction is 2025. With the, one thing I wanted to mention with the public comment period is, you know, that that's open for anyone, not just the people that attend this meeting. So if you know someone who wasn't able to watch this live tonight, or if you have a, they have a question or comment, you have a question or comment that you think of after this meeting or that you want to bring up later in a more private setting, please, you know, reach out to us through the contact info in the project, the project website in order to get that information to us. And now I'm going to turn it back over to Brenna to wrap this up.
Thanks Chris. And we are now in that comment portion of this public hearing. As a reminder, as Chris said, all comments are going to be included as part of the official public record that is submitted to the Federal Highway Administration. All comments are treated equally in terms of the format. So if you called in a comment, if you write it in the Q and A, if you write it in via email, send it in afterwards. If you make a verbal comment tonight, all of that will be documented. We will answer questions after we conclude with this comment portion. So you can make a written comment using the Q and A box at the bottom of your screen. If you would like to speak, if you'd like to make a verbal comment, we will begin with folks who signed up in advance. If you did not sign up, but you've decided now I want to make a verbal statement, all you have to do is click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen to indicate that you would like to speak. And then when it's your turn, I'll say your name, and you will get a prompt to unmute yourself. So when you click unmute, you'll state your name, and we'll confirm that we can hear you. And each speaker is given up to three minutes to comment. The project team will then answer questions after all the verbal comments have been made. And I know Mr. Tony Green, you indicated that you would like to make a verbal comment. If you would be so kind as to, if you would like to do that, please click raise hand. Okay. And Mr. Green, Mr. Tony Green, you should now be unmuted if you would like to go ahead and make your comment.
Yes ma'am. This is Tony and Linda Green. We're 722 Kentucky Highway 902 East. 12 years ago, I started building a home here, and then I found out about the highway. Well, I was in limbo, so I talked. Our local Caldwell County Times listed a fellow as the project coordinator. Said if you had property involved, he was your contact person. So I called this guy a half a dozen times, and he eventually told me, we've chosen the other side of Fredonia. You're safe to build whatever you want to. You're safe to build whatever you want to, that we're going around the other side of town. So I cut 120 trees off this property here, right here on 902 East, right outside Fredonia, and built a home, a barn, and a garage. I've got 12 years of my life in it. And then, as I was finishing my barn, my neighbor comes up and tells me that the department has changed their mind and they're going to take our houses out. He said, they didn't come and talk to you. And I said, no. And he said, well, they came and told me and my wife, we were going to have to find somewhere to go. And he said, I can't believe they didn't come up here, and nobody's ever contacted us. We don't, we're just in limbo. I've still got eyes and hands on my place that I want to finish, but it's devastating thing. It may get dozed out after, you know, 12 years of my life invested in it. So we're just kind of wondering, you know, when do the, when does the representative come around and explain to us? Yeah, you're going to lose this place after we lied to you, or we're going to go around you, or what? I mean, we just, we're hanging, you know?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Green. And Chris, would you care to answer, I think, what Mr. Green was asking about, a little bit about four affected properties? What's the right of way acquisition process going forward?
So so from here forward, once we do get, you know, when we get into that final design, work this fall will be probably, you know, we'll be contacting individual property owners because we will need to get on their property, do, you know, some more detailed survey work, field tie their property corners, things like that. And then when the property acquisition starts, they would, the first thing that would happen is they, you know, they're going to get a letter from the highway department stating that they have a property that is going to be purchased by the transportation cabinet. And then they'll, we'll, would send out an appraiser to meet with them and do an appraisal on their property. We hire and use the same registered real estate appraisers, licensed real estate appraisers that you use when you buy and sell a house or refinance your mortgage, things like that. And they'll do an evaluation on the the fair market value of of your property so that we can then determine what the compensation that would be offered to you moving forward would be. So, you know, that that wouldn't happen until we actually get to that right of way acquisition timeframe in 2023.
Okay. And we do have another person who has raised their hand to speak. Scott Giltner, I'm going to take you off mute. All right, Scott, if you're there, ask to unmute.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Scott Giltner, and I live in Louisville. I am concerned about the two cemeteries known as the Old Livingston Presbyterian Cemetery and the Old Fredonia Cemetery. My interest in these two cemeteries is that I have family members buried in both of them. Going back to the initial phase of this road project, these two cemeteries have been played around with a cavalier manner. Whichever cemetery was inconvenient, inconveniently in the way of the project was either not marked on the project maps or else they were shown in the wrong location. The Old Fredonia Cemetery, which this phase of the project comes very close to, if not actually into the cemetery, is still shown improperly on the last map I have seen. Several times, those of us familiar with this cemetery have offered to show representatives of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet what we know about the cemetery, but today, no representative has chosen to accept our offers. Instead, they have chosen to avoid learning anything about this cemetery. I suppose plausible deniability is the modus operandi of the Transportation Cabinet and its staff. The contemporary fence lines do not conform to the description of the cemetery provided in its deed dated 8th of November, 1885. Graves have been identified outside the contemporary fence lines supporting the description and the deed. Furthermore, grave depressions have been identified outside the boundaries described in the deed description, indicating there are additional graves outside the deeded boundaries. Some of the grave markers on the end closest to the proposed roadway have legible names which have been researched. It appears that the end of the cemetery closest to the proposed road is where slaves and their descendants have been buried. Given that the boundaries of the cemetery have not been properly identified and the presence of known burials exists outside the deed description, it is highly probable the roadway will be constructed over some of these graves. I think, I would think that the very minimum, the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet would practice due diligence and not only delineate the proper boundaries of the cemetery based on actual land records, but also survey the area immediately outside the deed boundaries for additional burial. Lastly, I would like to point out the spatial relationship of the bridges over Livingston Creek, the Old Fredonia Cemetery, and the proposed route of the road. In order to achieve the proposed route of the road, a sharp bend will have to be made immediately south of the bend, bridges. This will be a sharp uphill bend for southbound traffic and a sharp downhill bend for northbound traffic. I can only imagine the impact of this on safety and the semi tractor trailers this road is supposed to accommodate. I would assume the plan would be to minimize the required bend in the road. This is where the plausible deniability previously mentioned comes into play. Ignore the actual boundary of the cemetery and the surrounding burials, and the problem with the bend is greatly alleviated. As cynical as this may sound, it seems to be a likely scenario given the past history of the Transportation Cabinet leased to the cemetery. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Giltner. Is that something, Richard, Chris?
I'll, I'll just say that I know that when I took over this project in 2014, 15 timeframe, that we did have Mr. Giltner's comments and concerns. We did meet with the the property owner and our archaeologists have been out several times to look at the project. We've done some ground penetrating radar work in order to, you know, look for potential graves, potential other artifacts, things like that. I'm not entirely sure what I can share on that in a, in a public forum like this with, with people who are not the direct property owner or or people who may or may not, you know, besides Mr. Giltner, have have potentially relatives in that area. So, you know, I, I know a lot of that is available in in the environmental assessment. We'd probably want to follow up with Mr. Giltner individually after this, after this meeting in a more private setting to discuss that, and not that we're trying to hide anything. I just don't know if I can, you know, the archaeologists with with things like, you know, Native American artifacts, historic cemeteries, unmarked graves, things like that. That's just not something that we can give out to the general public. So just due to concerns with with theft and and vandalism and things like that. So what we do have, all, you know, all the information that we have, that we have can be made available to the property owners for what they have on their property. And obviously, if you have, you know, like Mr. Giltner, if you have, you know, specific, you know, relatives there, we can follow up with you on what we found and what we believe those cemetery boundaries should to be and why we believe those to be the cemetery boundaries. And so we can follow up with you, you know, offline after this meeting. Paul, Paul, do you have anything you wanted to add on that?
Well, Mr. Giltner mentioned the tie into the Livingston Creek bridges at the north end. And we are, we are threading a needle with a lot of sensitive features around Fredonia, as he mentions. We, we believe based on what we've identified to date that we have been able to design a roadway, a 55 mile an hour roadway that can tie into those existing bridges. It won't be as straight as the the road bed that's there now because we were, that road bed anticipated going out to the west of Fredonia, what was built north of Fredonia. But we we have, would have done a preliminary design that can fit and avoid the cemeteries and features that we know of right now. So as Chris mentioned, we can, we will follow up. We, no intent to not get as much information as possible, and have done. Try to do our due diligence to locate all these sensitive features, which there have been many with the course of the last 15 years. So, but but right now, based on what we know, the alignment is is safely designed for 55 miles an hour to tie into those existing bridges.
Okay, our next person who is asked to speak is Donald Boone.
Donald? Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Named Don Boone, Fredonia, the Boone Farm has been ground zero since 2002. Our farm impact is both Phase One Marion to Fredonia, and now this phase Fredonia to Edible. Our land boundaries both in Caldwell, Critting County, Livingston Creek, a blue line perennial stream flows through the part of it. We have lost 45 acres already due to this road project, and now you guys are coming back for more. This route we're talking about tonight, east of Fredonia to exit forward Lyon County, was actually recommended March 2004. One of your called experts told me that the Boone Farm evidently gave permission. I call a demon domain running out of control. This is hard to believe. We beat you in court, you appealed the court decision, you lost that, and then appealed the Commonwealth of Kentucky Court of Appeal, and that worked, did not work out for you. So what happened? The stimulus package, FEMA 2009, and your studies. Remember, your flood studies and calculations were disputed. And in 2016, the Boone Farm Caldwell Flood Zone area was revised, and I do have those 2016 FEMA maps. You guys have totally changed Livingston Creek and the US Department of Agriculture Conservation Farm Drainage System that not only benefits our farm, it helps our neighbors downstream. Seems to me someone needs some accountability for these so-called 500 year floods. Open record request has also exposed Kentucky Division of Water EPA to maybe floodplain encroachment permit. The shale grade, the fact shale grade material was used subgrade in a flood zone with no geotech fabric after US Army Corps of Engineer public notice didn't address this Boone Farm Conservation Drainage Wetland area. And yes, again, this location will be the sharpest 18720 tie into 18731. The Army Corps of Engineer, I believe, knowing this, also signed off on this. And while I have the opportunity to document this again, Boone Farm Access Bank, right away, plus Livingston Creek Drainage Banks and channel erosion is a major issue in both Caldwell and Critting County Boone Farm. Now about some other environmental issues. Endangered gray bat, the sinkholes and caves no one seemed to know about. Whatever happened about the Indiana bat issue at our farm pond and in our woods? Plus, the ball eagle documented in 2007. Three barn owl nest sites, all issues on the Boone Farm. Our farm history didn't seem to matter much to you either. Centerville Livingston Presbyterian Church Cemetery, oldest documented tombstones in Caldwell, Critting County, Revolutionary War burial sites. The cemetery is also designated as Kentucky Pioneer Cemetery by the Kentucky Historical Society. The Presbyterian Church was started here in 1797. Look up Kentucky Historical Marker Number 1097. The Boone Farm was and is an important part of Centerville history, including Cherokee relocation known today as a trellateer. And don't forget, we have archaeological sites on the property. In fact, Site 15CA67, which will also be involved again in this road project phase, was, is potentially eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. Where we heard that before. And now you we with another big problem. Old Fredonia Freeman Cemetery, an early 1800 cemetery will bear of white, both white and African Americans from Revolutionary War patriots, African American Civil War veterans, possible slave lay sites, many graves.
Mr. Ben, Mr. Ben, I apologize. Your three minutes is up, and we have to move on to other people who've signed up to make a comment, but we appreciate your comment. And again, if you would like to write in more or talk to the project team afterwards, we'll, we'll be happy to connect. Thank you. Okay, Terry Bonnell is next up to speak. Terry? Terry, you should be able to go off mute. There we go. Sorry, I clicked something. Click that again, Terry. There we go.
Are we good now?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And thanks for the opportunity to speak this afternoon evening. I'm the president of the People's Bank in Marion, Kentucky. And my question is, when and how will the decision be made for the type of lane structure? The the four lanes versus the 2.1? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I think we will get to, let's, let's hold that for our Q and A period about the different sections between the four lanes with the different medians and the two plus one. All right, Mayor, you are up next, but I think we also have Judge Curling, so it may be. So I'm going to take you all off mute. If it will let me.
Yes. Okay, on your exits, I talked to Kyle about this. When you get to 902 and 901, and also the Fredonia Corry Road, you've got the yield on, yield off exits. If you look at Critting County and you get right into Lyon County, they have the turning lane exits. Need you consider changing that, you know, your yield on and yield off exits are taking off a lot of land. So that is consideration I wish you would like.
Yes, and that's, Judge, that's something that, that Kyle had told me you had mentioned to him. And, you know, with, with the way that we've kind of changed the alignment, changed the skew, the the angle of the main line, the way it crosses those side roads is not really ideal anymore. We'd like for that, those to be at 90 degree angles, and it, it, it's not. We're, we're going to look at tighten those up, yes. I said that what we've drawn is kind of the worst case scenario. Well, we're going to look at some options to tighten those up when we get in that final design process to try to impact less properties and take less, take less land at those approaches. So, you know, it, it's something that, by shifting to the railroad alignment, the railroad bed kind of made some of those worse than they were before. But we're definitely going to look at, at ways that we can make it better than what you see here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, my name is Jim Cyber. I'm the mayor here in Fredonia. Guys, we have issue with this road going over our water lines. Our water lines are asbestos lines, been in the ground since 1964. And they are failing, and they will fail under your road. I have no doubt about that. So you really need to look into replacing the water lines under your road and bed them properly with valves on each side of the road. Because when they fail at 90, 98 PSI, you're going to have ice all over your road.
So, Paul, I don't know if you had, I don't, I'm not sure how much funding has been dedicated for utility relocations on this project, but we do have a dedicated amount of funds set up for utility relocations, and that's something that we, we manage out of the district office. We would work with your, with you or whoever manages that utility for you to hire a, an engineer to design the new water lines, and then also hire a contractor to pay to relocate those water lines and to do a new location that's, that's away from the roadway. Paul just messaged me, we have $2.5 million set up for utility funds. And, and so all of that is, since you're a, a, a city, a publicly owned municipality owns those water and sewer lines, all of that would be paid for by the Transportation Cabinet.
Okay. Our other, you're taking away tourism and business in Fredonia. We would like some kind of signage package. If y'all could put that together, I'm not going to approve it. City Council will approve it. But also, guys, every other road being built, the 6880 bypass, Calvert City, they're getting bike lanes. And you probably hate to hear that, but we would really like to have a bike lane coming from Edible to Fredonia, and that's a tourism business I can start and work with to make up for what you're taking away from us. This part of Caldwell County is the only tourism, well, the biggest tourism in the county. We get four counties coming through here heading to the lake, and we're going to lose that. So now I'm going to have to build a whole new tourism business on this. So if you guys could look at that and give back to that, I, I don't know frankly why it's not included on every road. Other states do.
For the signage question, you won't have seen this yet because it's under construction right now, but the, the new, the section of 641 down in the southern part of Callaway County, we, we did something similar with the city of Hazel with, working with them to, to create some tourist destination signage package, and I think we, we could look at doing something similar to the, for this project in the Fredonia area. And then as we evaluate the typical sections, the, the bike lane stuff is something that we can look at also.
I know, I, I talked to, uh, Judge Newcomb and he is in favor of it too. We could tie this all the way from Princeton to Edible to Fredonia to Marion. And like Bardstown has the bourbon run, we could turn that into a barbecue run as many barbecue places along that route. Uh, another thing is flooding. Now, we sit in the valley and this road is going to be going uphill the whole way.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is this water going to flood back into our town and are you going to destroy any sinkholes? Because that's where most of our water drains to in this town.
Right, so that'll all be stuff that we'll look at in detail in our final design analysis. We'll be doing, uh, geotechnical investigations, geotechnical borings to try to figure out exactly where all those sinkholes are and see if we can figure out where the drainage goes to. Um, and then based on that, we'll be developing a, uh, an overall project drainage plan that will, um, minimize, you know, I guess that will maintain the same flow patterns you see now and maintain the same flow amounts that you see now. And also, uh, you know, try to protect, you know, obviously if there's, for example, a, a sinkhole that's getting a little bit of water now, we're not going to turn around and then dump ten times as much water into and just leave it like that. We would come up with some kind of plan to, um, divert or detain or do something with that water to try to maintain those natural flow patterns as much as possible to, to try to mimic what's out there right now.
Now, your, your engineer design is due to be done this year. Well, we see it here at City Hall, where someone come and talk to us about what you're doing.
Uh, yes, we, we, you know, nor- normally, you know, the, the individual property owners will see us out there and see us talking to them, but we, we will also come and and try to keep you and the other local officials updated on what we're doing as that's going forward.
And guys, I don't know if you own this bike path, if you do much research on it or see what's going on around the world or other towns, but they make some prefabricated bike paths that are made out of recycled plastic that last a long time and divert water flow. That'd be a really economical way to do this. And, you know, I, I don't mean to engineer your own stuff, but instead of pouring concrete and blacktop, you could put that in cheap and easy.
Right.
That's something to look at.
Okay.
So that's all I have. I'd like to hear more of Donnie Boone's comments, so.
Well, uh, thank you, Mayor and Judge. Um, I saw that Tiffany Boone had her hand raised. Um, Tiffany, if you would like to, there you go. Okay, Tiffany, you are, you should be able to speak. All right. Tiffany, can you make a comment or say your name? We're not hearing you right now. Okay, it appears we're, um, having some technical difficulties hearing, uh, Tiffany, so, um, I, I think at this point we'll allow, um, we have no one else waiting in the queue, so, um, Mr. Boone, we'll, we'll go back to you to finish up your comment. Okay, Mr. Boone?
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, uh, I was, I was on the Old Fredonia Freeman Cemetery, uh, was what I was talking about when you cut me off. It's an early eighteen hundred cemetery barrels of both white and African Americans from Revolutionary War patriot, African American Civil War veterans to possible slave grave sites. Many grave sites are identified by tombstone, but believed to be two to three hundred unknown graves, um, grave sites marked only by sandstone, rock or ground depression. With some known to be outside of the cemetery fenced area like Mr. Scott said. The cemetery deed of eighteen eighty-five appears not to encompass all cemetery burial sites, which wasn't unusual for persons of eighteen hundred, persons of color of eighteen hundred. How you guys plan to not use ground penetrating studies in this area of the cemetery and expect to satisfy the African American genealogy group of Kentucky is above my pay scale. Now, when I say that, I have talked to some of these officials that's been up there in that cemetery. No plans were made to do ground penetrating that I'm aware of. Another thing I want Chris Koontz to ask me, or I wanted to ask Chris Koontz about on this too. We've already lost forty-five acres to this project. Chris has been on this project ever since it started. How you guys justifying this? Because like I said before, this road project we're talking about tonight was actually recommended in two thousand and four. Can you answer me, Chris?
I'm sorry. I missed what the question was.
Since we've lost forty-five acres, you guys talk about your use in the property and everything, state-owned property and not impacting other farms and houses any more than you have to. The Boone Farm has already lost forty-five acres. You also said in an environmental interview back when this road started in two thousand and three and four that it did not cross any floodplain area on any of the alternates. As soon as you hit Caldwell County, you crossed a U.S. Department of Agriculture Conservation Reserve floodplain drainage system. And y'all have completely changed that thing now, like I'd said earlier.
I think our reference to the floodplain was to the, um, the, the FEMA flood map, um, floodplains rather than the, the, the U.S. Ag Con, uh, Conservation thing that you just mentioned, but that's certainly something that, you know, we would take into account also as we're, we're doing the design and during the acquisition. As far as the property acquisition, you know, I, I, I did not intend that to mean that we were not impacting any private property owners. We know we're impacting a lot of private property owners and we know that this is a pretty significant impact to a lot of people's lives. Um, you know, there's nothing really that, that we do that compares to the disruption that happens when, when people lose land for a highway project. And by no means are we trying to, to minimize that or say that, that we're not doing it. Uh, our intent was that is, you know, with those statements was that, you know, in the Lyon County section, we originally um, had, had a lot of the alignment on, on private property to the west of the prison farm and, and due to a lot of negotiations with some of the local officials and the justice cabinet, we moved that, um, line over to the, uh, onto the state prison property. So we were able to, to reduce the amount of private property that's being used for the project, but, you know, in no way are, are we eliminating it. And there's still a lot of, you know, private property that will need to be acquired by the cabinet for the project.
Okay, with, okay, with my, my understanding is you guys are coming after more land on our property, quite a bit more land, by the way. And Chris, me and you have already talked about this. Your plan so far has been showing the two thousand and nine flood zone. That's what the plan shows tonight is a two thousand and nine flood zone. I'm telling you. This has already been revised and you guys know this.
Okay, uh, Mr. Boone, thank you for your comment and I think Tiffany indicated that she was able to make a comment using, um, your device there. So if you would be so kind as to pass it to Tiffany and we'll allow Tiffany to speak and then we'll, um, continue down our list.
We're good now, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Don and Tiffany. Um, next we will go to Gregory West.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, I'm the current, uh, trial commissioner in Crittenden County, which I wanted to say that, to say that I'm not representing anyone except myself. In two thousand and three, I become magistrate of the fifth district in Crittenden County. And that is the majority of the county where the new road that we have, the new six forty-one went through. I was there until two thousand and eleven. And the reason why I'm in favor of us having a four lane in Crittenden County is that our kids have nothing hardly to do in, in Crittenden County. We do not have a way to, um, get on a four lane road. All the counties around us do. And I was told at one time, right before I became, uh, county magistrate, uh, the then representative Mike Cherry told me that from E-Town all the way that we was the only county at that time that did not have a legal one oh two road. In Crittenden County, we, we've had small roads for years and years. And of course, we know that today, that you need a good road to bring in businesses. And my grandkids, I do not want them to have to leave, as many of my classmates as I graduated in seventy-eight, those who are still alive, many of them had to leave the county, the state to get jobs at that time. And I understand about, uh, our neighbors who have losing their ground and, and things such as that and have their concerns, I would too. And I'm not saying anything about that, but we need a four lane road to connect to the rest of the roads that's in their communities. Because right now, we have the one six forty-one that's, that wasn't, it was originally a four lane, which has been built for a four lane with the, the grading and the bridges, but we've got still a two lane. And I hope that somehow that the state will work it out with those landowners and with our court and our judge and those courts and their judges in the other counties to help us out and help their counties at the same time. Because I'm in favor of this very much. Eighty-two percent, I was told by someone from Murray State that represented the college, when I had them down one time trying to get a United Way in our county, that eighty-two percent of our kids that we pay taxes for have to leave our county and the other counties around this area or out of state, they get the benefit of our tax money. So I appreciate your time and appreciate your consideration, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. And, and just to follow up a little bit on what you said, the, the options that, that you have seen with the four lane, the, the narrow four lane, the, the two plus one options, even the two lane, um, that you have now, uh, constructed in, uh, Crittenden County with just the, the two wider lanes and the wider shoulders. All of those options do meet the minimum qualifications for the National Truck Network. Uh, that's something that we, we've done a little bit of research on to, to figure out exactly what those qualifications are. So even if we just built two lanes to mimic what is in six forty-one and, or in six, in Crittenden County initially, and it was only a two lane road initially with those wider shoulders and wider lanes, it would meet the qualifications for the National Truck Network, so it would be able to be put on, on that list, on that map. And then it would be legal for those hundred and two inch trucks all the way to Marion. Obviously, if, you know, a, a, a three lane road is better, would be better for that than a two lane road and a four lane road would be better than it, than the three or the two, but based on funding, we don't know exactly what we're going to end up with. But anything that we do is going to meet that minimum standard for that National Truck Network.
Okay, and we'll, um, go back to either the mayor or Judge Curling, we'll go back to. All right, you all should be able to speak, let me, let me click on it one more time. Maybe, there we go. Well? Sorry, bear with me. Nicole, can you, can you, there we go.
Okay, hey, guys, one other thing on this map, you have a Sis Baker Park as historic site. Um, we, the city do not own that and once you build this road, there's going to be really no sidewalk to that little park. Uh, we're not going to take care of it, once you do whatever you do. Uh, you can go ahead and, they, they can move the monument and put their, their park wherever they want, but it's not, it's not city property. And we're going to have no way to maintain it once you, you build these ramps. So keep that in mind too, when you're looking at these plans again. That, that's all.
Okay, thank you for that, uh, information.
Okay, I think we have, um, I don't see any other hands that are raised. Um, if you would like to make, anybody would like to make a verbal comment. Um, as a reminder, you can ask questions, um, or make a written comment using the Q and A function um, and, and even following this meeting. Um, we do want to go back to, uh, Terry's question, had a question and, uh, Chris, you sort of answered it a little bit about the different um, options, the two plus one, the four, uh, four lanes with a flat median or flush median, um, and the four lane with a, a forty foot median. Um, and I think the question was, when will a decision be made on what will actually be built?
Right, and, and I think that's probably something that we'll have decided, um, by the end of this year, later in the fall and winter, as we go through the final design and start looking at the, the, those different options and what the costs are, uh, we'll make a recommendation on what we think the best alternate is. Um, obviously cost and the highway department, K H C budget pays, plays an impact in that also. Everybody's seen that on six forty-one north, it was designed as a four lane and the money was not available, so only two lanes were built. So that, that's something that'll factor into it also, um, outside of the, the normal engineering considerations.
Okay, and we do have a question that came in, um, via the Q and A. Jeff Sims asked, what was the reasoning behind not just, behind not adding just an additional lane to the current six forty-one with shoulders? If a two plus one is an option?
We have looked at some options along the existing corridor, the, the, one of the problems you have with the existing corridor is that the horizontal and vertical curves, the curves to the right and left and the curves that, that go up and down or not, um, ha- have a lot of issues. And so you would have to realign part of the existing road in order to bring that up to a fifty-five mile an hour design standard. And by the time you fix those curve issues, add the, add the additional lane and then widen with shoulders, you end up impacting a lot of the homes and properties that are along U S six forty-one. And so it actually, uh, uh, affects, you know, less, less houses, less homes taken by going with the cross-country option rather than trying to widen the existing, uh, alignment.
All right, any other questions? Okay. All right, well, this does conclude our public hearing this evening. Thank you for your time and feedback, um, on this important project as it moves forward. As a reminder, you can find information about the project online at six forty-one connect dot com, including map and the environmental assessment document. A recording of tonight's hearing will be transcribed and we will get it posted to the website this week. The public comment period will remain open for another three weeks, open through Friday, August sixth. If you have additional comments or questions, please send the project team an email. You can send that to info at six four one connect dot com or you can call one eight 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 six four one zero zero three six. And again, thank you and have a good evening.